I didn't either. That's kind of cool. They still hit you with curveballs. They still throw curveballs, huh? No.
What's the difference between eight and nine?
Amendment to the land use plan.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah. You're just yes. You are a rubber stand.
Really?
No, you said, I don't know. You're not. So I thought you knew the answer to that.
Okie dokie, here we go. Welcome to the June 25th, 2024 City Planning Commission meeting here. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Davies. McCune. Matthews. Bane. Fudge.
President.
Jet.
Here.
Forbes.
Here.
Worrell.
Here.
Van Velson.
Here.
A current copy of the State of Nebraska's open meeting laws are on that back wall right there. If you need to refer to that, feel free to do so. Second item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the May 28, 2024 meeting. Trust you've all had a chance to read them intently.
I would so move.
Who?
Approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Well, that was the issue.
Motion by Van Velson, seconded by Bane to approve the minutes. It's already out. Look at that. Any discussion on that? Shell, please. And the minutes are approved. Item number three is a public hearing, file number AM 24-003, discuss and consider action on an application by Nick and Failing Hudson, Deep Waters Retreat LLC, for amendment to the North Platte, Nebraska Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from agricultural vacant to commercial located at 2211 North Buffalo Bill Avenue on property described as attractive land in lots 14 and 15. Cody Land and Cattle Company subdivision of the northwest quarter of Section 29 Township 14 North Range 30 West of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Lincoln County, Nebraska, consisting of 49.10 acres. Judy.
Would you like to open the other public hearing also as they are the same properties?
Sure. We can do that as well. That public hearing will be on file number Z 24-005, discuss and consider action on application by Nick and Failing Hudson, Deep Waters Retreat LLC to rezone certain lands from A1 Transitional Agricultural District to B2 Highway Commercial District located at 2211 North Buffalo Bill Avenue on property described as tracts, attractive land in lots 14 and 15. Cody Land and Cattle Company subdivision of the northwest quarter of Section 29 Township 14 North Range 30 West of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Now is it your turn?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. Items number three and four on the agenda involve the same property and may be discussed together. If item number three is not approved, then item number four cannot be acted upon and will be pulled from the agenda. You should have all received a copy of the amendment and a copy of the land use map attached to that with the proposed change. On item number four, you should have all received a copy of the review comments, a letter from the applicant, a hand drawn site plan from the applicant, and then attached to that also is a rezoning map with the proposed rezoning. In order to rezone a property, it's the duty of the Planning Commission to ensure that the rezoning is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. The request for the amendment has been submitted in conjunction with the rezoning. The applicants are requesting the amendment to allow the change and zone. Planning staff has no objections to the amendment. The parcel is currently a vacant cornfield to the north. There are uses that still remain under the agricultural land use category. However, they are more commercial in nature. The Lincoln County Museum, Wild West Arena, and Dusty Trails are all commercial uses that neighbor the property. On the south, a proposed church with riding stables and arena has been considered at the last meeting. Again, more commercial in nature. There is residential land use to the west of the property. However, changing this future commercial use should not be a detriment to the neighboring properties. And with the rezoning, the applicant states that the area to be rezoned for commercial business, tourism, including camping cabins, a garden, museum. The eastern portion set aside for possible future housing. The property is currently vacant and new structures will be necessary. The change in zoning will allow the applicant's services to reach more people in the North Platte surrounding area. Planning staff has no objections to the zone change, the commercial business and museum if the zoning and change would be allowed in a B2 Highway Commercial District. The future proposed camping cabins would require a conditional use permit to be allowed in a B2 Highway Commercial District. The future housing would possibly require a future change in zone. Again, this parcel is currently a vacant cornfield to the north. There are uses that are more commercial in nature. And on the south, the proposed church. If you have any questions, the applicant is in the audience and I too would also be happy to answer any that I can.
Okie dokie. We're going to have several public hearings tonight, so I'm only going to read this once. So if you're here to speak at a public hearing, please listen up. Planning Commission values your input and wants to hear from the audience during public hearings. Anyone wishing to speak must first be recognized by the chair. That's me. Once recognized, please approach the podium, state your name and address. Please keep your comments to less than three minutes. Repetitive excessively long testimony may be ended at the discretion of the chair. Everybody get that? Okay. And with that, the public hearing on this particular item is open. Would anybody like to speak on this one? Nope. Hey, this is kind of like an auction. You put your hand up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna yell sold and bring you up, all right? All right. Going once. Going twice.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Jet to close this public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Not? Michelle, please. And the public hearing is closed. We're going to talk about this one up here now, okay? So we have first up the change in the comprehensive plan, which we must approve before we would consider any zoning change. Any discussion on item number three?
It's probably a better use than the two uses. The one that we approved last time and this one probably a better use than a cornfield in that location.
I have one question about the comprehensive plan. So when we approved the change in the comprehensive plan last time for the Cowboy Church Parcel, it only goes to that parcel, correct? It did not go further.
That is correct, but we honestly did not make an amendment to the comp plan for that one because it was an allowed use in an ag under a conditional use. So we didn't have to take that step.
Okay. So will this, the comprehensive plan then will include that parcel at this point?
No, it will just be this parcel that's requested. So just that north half of that parcel.
Got it. Thank you for the explanation.
No problem.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Judy's taking all complaints tonight.
I move to recommend, to make a recommendation to approve file number AM 240-003, an amendment to the North Platte, Nebraska Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from agricultural vacant to commercial located at 2211 North Buffalo Bill Avenue.
I'll second.
Motion by Davies, seconded by Matthews to recommend changing the future land use map. Any more discussion on this matter? Not? Shell, please. And that is approved. So we may move on to item number four, which is the zoning, proposed zoning change from A1 Transitional to a B2 Highway Commercial District. Any discussion on that matter? Somebody's got to make the motion.
I motion to, I move to make a recommendation to approve file number Z 24-005 to rezone certain lands from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to a B2 Highway Commercial District located at 2211 North Buffalo Bill Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Jet, seconded by Davies to recommend flipping the zoning from A1 to B2. Any more discussion on this? Not? Michelle, please. And that is approved.
Both of these items will go to the city council meeting on July 2nd.
Okie dokie. Item number five is another public hearing, file number Z 24-007, discuss and consider action on an application by Tom Timmerman to rezone certain lands from an A1 Transitional District to an RL suburban residential district located 1825 West State Farm Road on property described as Lot 2, post administrative subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
The applicant, you, excuse me, you should have received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a current zoning map with the proposed changes and attached to the back of that is the next item, which is a proposed subdivision. The applicant is requesting the rezoning to allow a subdivision to occur for future sale of two lots. Proposed lot two and three post third replat and allow the owner to retain a small lot with the existing home site proposed lot one third post third replat. Planning staff has no objections to the zone change. Currently, the property is zoned A1 Transitional Agricultural. City of North Platte Code of Ordinances states the minimum lot size for agricultural properties is over 10 acres. In order to subdivide, proposed lot two and lot one need to be rezoned to meet minimum acre requirements. The area is designated as future residential according to the City of North Platte Comprehensive Plan 2011 and will not need to be amended. Neighboring properties are zoned RL Suburban Residential and A1 Transitional Agricultural. So the zoning should not be a detriment to the surrounding area.
Okie dokie.
The applicant is not here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so this one is a public hearing as well and same rules apply. And with that, the public hearing on this matter is now open. Anyone here to talk about this one? Y'all are disappointing me. Would you like to testify on this matter, sir? You need to come up, can you come up to the podium for us?
Dean Packard, I live at 1919 West State Farm Road.
Okay.
I am not, I have no concerns with these guys rezoning as long as my right of way and my access does not change.
Think that'll be an issue on this one?
He should be impacted by that.
There's your answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else on this one? Going once, going twice.
Second.
Motion by Bane, seconded by Davies to close a public hearing on this matter. Any discussion on that motion? Not? Shell, please. And the public hearing is now closed. Okay, we're going to talk about this one now. Any discussion on this particular application? This is a zoning change. Okay.
You're going to have to be access to these lots.
So in the next agenda item is the subdivision. So it does show access. That is something that staff discussed at length because of the way that this property already sits.
Right, that's what I was looking at.
Yep.
So are they going to enter this property off Echo then? Is that what I'm seeing or no?
No, it would be off of State Farm on the east side of that 1919 is how they would access that north property. His property where the house currently exists, he already has access, which is that second property.
Okay. Very good.
And then the large piece, yes, they would enter off of Echo more than likely unless some future road was designated.
Gotcha.
From State Farm.
Any more discussion on this one?
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number Z 24-007 to rezone certain lands from A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an RL Suburban Residential District on property located at 1825 West State Farm Road. Proposed lots two and three post third replat.
Motion by Matthews, seconded by Forbes to approve the, make a motion to recommend approval of the zoning change. Sorry, I'm a little spacey tonight. Any more discussion on that? Not? Shell, please. And that is approved. So item number six tonight is discuss and consider preliminary and final approval of post third replat located at 1825 West State Farm Road on property described as Lot 2, post administrative subdivision, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
Okay, and since the zoning was approved, we can go on to the subdivision. And what you should see is a, you should have received review comments and then preliminary and final plat of post third replat. Public utilities are not currently available to service the lot. So if developed, the owner will need to use well and septic or extend water and sewer services at the owner's expense. The subdivision will split one lot into three lots for the purposes of future sale of the property. If you look at that final plat, planning staff requested easements for possible future public right of way as shown on the plat. The reason for the easements is to plan for future development of the large lot, which is proposed lot two. Seems reasonable to add easements to ensure access to all properties for possible future development. Planning staff has no objections to the proposed subdivision since the rezoning has occurred. The easements I'm talking about is on, which would be the east side of Lot 1 post third replat at 1825. There is an easement that goes all the way from State Farm all the way up to the north of the property. Those can be changed in the future. So if a developer were to happen to come in and want to do something different, they can always be changed. It's not set in stone. But we wanted to make sure from a planning perspective that we had access to that north lot just in case something were to occur.
Questions, comments, discussion?
So is that adding another access across a trail then? Or is that?
Possibly, but again, that's just possible.
Possible, you're saying.
That may never occur. We just wanted to make sure that there would be the possibility of doing that based on future development of that north larger acreage.
Okay.
It could be set up in five years a completely different way.
Yeah, okay.
Any more discussion?
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number SU 24-010, preliminary and final approval of post third replat.
Second.
Motion by Davies, seconded by Matthews to approve the recommended, the final replat. Any more discussion on the matter? Not? Michelle, please. Waiting on you, Mr. Van Velson. There it is.
These items will also be on the July 2nd city council agenda.
Okie dokie. Moving along, item number seven is another public hearing, file number Z 24-008, discuss and consider action on application by Kim Sellers owner and Titan Machinery purchaser to rezone certain lands from R3 Dwelling District to an I1 Light Industrial District located at 1265 and 1301 North Dodge Avenue on property described as Lot 4 and Lot 5, Lincoln Highway First replat, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy.
You should have all received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a letter from Titan Machinery, a site map, and then also a current zoning map with the proposed rezoning as shown. The applicant is requesting the rezoning in order to purchase the properties that adjoin the current Titan Machinery location at 3211 Rodeo Road and would like to explore adding additional shop retail parking to the site. The area for the proposed rezoning has two unoccupied mobile homes on site. Planning staff has no objections to the zone change. The property abuts the current Titan Machinery location and would make a good addition to the site. The properties they are proposing to rezone and purchase have two mobile homes, one of which appears to be in the process of demolition. Rezoning these parcels should not be a detriment to the area.
Okie dokie.
Questions, I'll be happy to help.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, same rules apply. Anybody here to talk on this one? Y'all are going to gang up on us here in a minute, aren't you? Going once. Going twice.
My move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Van Velson, seconded by Jet to close the public hearing. He got you that time, Mr. Bane. Any discussion on that motion? Not? Michelle, please. And the public hearing is now closed. We'll discuss this one now up here. Any discussion? Comments, concerns? Not?
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number Z 24-008 to rezone certain lands from an R3 Dwelling District to an I1 Light Industrial District located at 1265 and 1301 North Dodge.
Second.
Motion by Jet, seconded by Davies to make, to recommend approval. Any more discussion? Not? And that is approved.
That will go to the July 2nd meeting also, city council.
Okay, we're going to group these two next public, the next two public hearings together because they're essentially the same thing. So I'm going to read both of them in. Item number eight is file number AM 24-004, discuss and consider action on application by Martin Caden Ottinger Stonebridge LLC for an amendment to the North Platte, Nebraska Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from residential low density, single family to commercial located on South Buffalo Bill Avenue, north of West State Farm Road on property described as attractive land from a point beginning described as the northwest corner of Block 2, Glenfields Third Subdivision, Lincoln County, Nebraska, thence along north the property line of Block 2, south 88 degrees. Oh, boy. Fifty, fifty minutes, 51 seconds east. Did I read that correctly? Fifty feet. Okay, sorry. Fifty feet, 51. Is it feet?
Eighty-eight degrees, 50 feet. Fifty.
Fifty minutes, 51 seconds.
Thank you. East, a distance of 300 feet, thence parallel to the east lot line of Block 2, south, oh my goodness, zero, zero.
Degrees.
Degrees, 21 minutes, 32 seconds west, a distance of 378.78 feet. Thence parallel to the north lot line, north 88 degrees, 50 minutes, 51 seconds west, a distance of 270.36 feet to the west property line of Block 2, thence along the west line of Block 2, north 0 degrees, 58 minutes, 39 seconds, a distance of 33 feet. Thence along the south line of Block 2, south 89 degrees, 13 minutes, 8 seconds west, a distance of 27.07 feet. Thence along the west block line of Block 2, west lot line of Block 2, a distance of north 1 degree, 1 minute, 51 seconds west, 77.76 feet. Thence along the west line of Block 2, north 0 degrees, 57 minutes, 28 seconds west, a distance of 14.34 feet. Thence along a line, along west lot line of Block 2, north 0 degrees, 26 minutes, 40 seconds east, a distance of 225.44 feet to the point of beginning 2.59 acres plus or minus. Now I got to read that again. Because item number nine. Perfect.
For the same real estate.
We really are trying to keep this light tonight, all right? File number Z4, item number nine is filed Z 24-009, discuss and consider action on application by Martin Cading Ottinger Stonebridge LLC to rezone certain lands from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to a B2 Highway Commercial District located on South Buffalo Bill Avenue, north of West State Farm Road on property described, that I just described actually in the previous agenda item. I'm not reading that again. Okay? This is a public hearing, okay? I'm going to have Judy set this up, so go ahead and do that.
Okay, so we're looking at two items. The first one is the amendment to the comprehensive plan and you should have received a copy of the review comments and then also attached to that is a copy of the current land use map and some previously amended parcels. Again, in order to rezon a property, it's the duty of the Planning Commission to ensure that the rezoning is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. The request for amendment has been submitted in conjunction with the rezoning and the applicants are requesting the amendment to allow a change in zoning. On May 28th, 2024, Planning Commission approved an amendment on this property. However, that item was tabled at the city council meeting on June 4th, 2024 and Planning Commission is being asked to consider the proposed amendment with less property involved. The amendment is for approximately 2.59 acres within the northwest portion of the property and not the entire parcel. By only amending this portion, if the owner wishes to extend the amendment, another application would be required. Planning staff has no objections to the amendment. This portion of the parcel is currently vacant and abuts residential areas on the east and north with commercial areas on the west. The property is directly abutting a high traffic road with speeds posted that are more conducive to commercial areas. Additional commercial development in the area where there is existing commercial development should not be a detriment to neighboring property owners. On the rezoning application, you should have received a copy of the justification written by the property owner, an estimated site map showing the location of the proposed building. Also with that, there is the site of the proposed rezoning area and amendment area that was described earlier by the chair. And again, a proposed area to be rezoned with a current zoning map. The applicant states that the site will be used for a new Marina Boat Service Center. A new building will be constructed to service local boats. A new building will be constructed to service local boats and engines with an opportunity for retail boat sales. The applicant does not feel that there will be any increase in traffic as Buffalo Bill is a highly utilized by North Platte residents traveling to Lake Maloney. This is a very convenient location for residents that live in North Platte and at the lake. Most boaters in the community must travel out of town for repairs. Again, on May 28, 2024, planning commission approved rezoning this property. However, that item was tabled at the city council meeting on June 4, 2024, and planning commission is being asked to consider the proposed rezoning with less property involved. This rezoning is approximately, is for approximately 2.59 acres, the northwest portion of the property and not the entire parcel. By only rezoning this portion, if the owner wishes to extend the commercial zoning in the future, both a land use amendment and rezoning will require additional applications. Planning staff has no objections to the rezoning. This portion of the parcel is currently vacant, surrounded by suburban residential areas on the east and north with commercial areas on the west. The property is directly abutting a high traffic road with speeds posted that are more conducive to commercial areas. Additional commercial development to the area where there is existing commercial development should not be a detriment to the neighboring property owners. Just to be clear, when you look at that proposed amendment and that proposed rezoning, that area that is being proposed is approximately 300 foot wide by 300 foot wide, give or take a little bit, which leaves a 54-foot buffer on the east side that will remain ag, plus the additional property to the south that will all remain ag. So I just wanted to make sure that you were clear on where exactly that location was.
You good?
I am good.
All right, here we go. This is a public hearing, okay? We respect your opinions. We want to hear from you. Please keep it as brief as possible because I sense there's a bunch of you here that would like to say something. So we're gonna take them in order, okay? Write them down. I'm gonna start a timer. If it gets repetitive, we'll try and keep it a little briefer, but we do want to hear from you, okay? So who wants to go first? Come on up. Let me get, let me get to my doodad. Doodad is a technical term.
You ready, Dave?
Hold on a minute, how do I do the doodad? Stopwatch. I got one right here. All right, name and address, sir.
My name is Ian Pearson. I live at 4701 Valley Drive.
What was your name, sir?
Ian Pearson. I.A.N.
Can you spell your last name for me, sir?
V.E.A.R. for Rabbit, S.O.N.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let me start by saying the local residents are totally against this rezoning to commercial strictly. Well, I think because of the noise. My wife has, suffers from chronic migraines, so the noise is not, not gonna help, so. I work third shift, so I sleep through the day. And I'm not, well, the guy that was sitting there, he also works third shift. Yeah, so I sleep through the day, so you think I want to be woke up by outboard engines revving up on a daily basis. I invite the board to come out to see how quiet the neighborhood is, you know? Come on out, see what you think. I think this, the owners of this company is strictly, it's strictly financial gain profit. It's not thinking about the local residents. You know, we have issues with the PALS with the late bans and stuff like that. Now, now they want to bring in a commercial boat shop, knowing well how noisy that's gonna be. So they're not thinking about the local residents at all. This is strict, like I said, strictly a financial gain here for them. As far as the boat shop goes, do you realize the decimal level of an outboard? If you get the exhaust ports out of the water, how loud an outboard motor is? And that's just at idle. Imagine what it's like when they're revving, revving this thing up. You know, you forklifts with their rear, you know, buzzer going off, going back and forth, the traffic in and out. Has there been an environmental impact study on this? Because there's a lot of chemicals in fuel with, associated with a boat shop. I don't know if anyone has, has done that or seen an impact study. Lot of locals grow, excuse me, lot, lot of locals grow vegetables and they have their own garden, so. Like Ken had mentioned, the water table is very high. So I'd hate to think if there was any chemicals leaking into this, the effect that it would have on the locals. Now, as far as boat shops, I have a close friend that has a, goes to Carney, to Buzz Marine, and you think they, they're in a commercial industrial area. Do you think they're backed up against residential? Hell, no. And I think the son or the nephew, he works there. He should know better. Do you ask him or I'll tell you the answer right now? It's not, not a place to be bringing in, in a commercial boat shop. I mean, no one's against it, but there is issue, like Ken said, there's multiple residential, I mean, commercial properties out on 83. And that's the main, if you look at Lake Maloney, the main boat ramps are on the east end, and to get to those, they're up 83, not South Buffalo Bill. I, you're built, I don't know if it was the county with the city, but you're built this beautiful bike path, walk-in path. And the whole thing with the bike path is to get away from traffic, right? But now you want to bring into business with all this traffic coming across a bike path. I use it. You know, I mean, you've got elderly people, you've got kids. I see kids like cross country, they practice on that bike path. I would hate to think with all this added in and out traffic, there is an incident, you know? That's, you're defeating the whole purpose of a bike path. That's to get away from traffic, not, not, not have it where you're increasing it. You know, we live there, we're not in and out for 10 minutes. We live there permanently. We gotta, we would have to listen to this on a daily basis. I don't think there's been a lot of thought from the other side about the local community. I keep bringing back to this point, it's, it's all financial gain. It's in my, it's very disrespectful in my, in my opinion, so.
Mr. Pearson, we're at five minutes, sir.
That's, that's about what I've got to say, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Very good, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave.
Who wants to go next?
I promise I'll be brief.
What's your name, ma'am?
Beverly Gattula, G-O-T-T-U-L-A. And I live at 4620 Valley Drive. And my property is right against the field in question. My backyard is right there. And my husband and I purchased this property for a reason. We wanted to move out of the city. We used to live by a block from Young's Marine. We know what it's like. We heard it all day, every day when we lived in town. We purchased this property outside of town for a reason, to get away from noise and for the tranquility that we have out there. And we knew at the time this was ag land and earmarked for future, future residential use. And to only rezone a portion of this field makes no sense at all because you're gonna be back here next year rezoning the rest of it, and you're still gonna put a boat shop on it, which is, you're still gonna have the same issue with rezoning just a portion of it. We're gonna have the noise. There's no possible way you can have boat engines running inside of a closed building with gas and smoke and not have shop doors open all day long. There's no possible way they can do that. And we have a few trust issues like we, Ian spoke of because we were told when pals went in that we wouldn't be bothered by it at all, that everything would be shut down by 10 o'clock at night, which I enjoy pals myself, I've gone over there. However, that's proven time and time and time again not to be true. We hear it when they have bans till 12:30, 1 o'clock in the morning. Our windows sometimes rattle, the sheriff's been called in the past because it's loud for the, for the size of venue. So we know there's noise, and we don't want to add more noise to the noise we already on occasion have. But this would produce, you know, noise every single day of our life, pretty much, that it's open. And like Ian spoke, there's, there's gotta be lots of commercial properties where something like this could go. I'm not against a boat shop by any means. I own a boat, but not in my backyard. And I just would like, if you would consider the impact that the rezoning is gonna have on this entire neighborhood, which consists of at least 25-plus homes, maybe even more, I'm not sure, but there's many of the residents here tonight. The whole back wall is all, all from this neighborhood. And just ask you to consider that impact it's gonna have on us. That's all I have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gattula? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name's Ken Kaski. I'm at 104 South Maple. And I'd ask you, indulge me a little bit because I'm speaking for a couple of people too. We're here representing, and raise your hands if you're opposed to this.
Sir, you're testifying to us, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, just on behalf, so on behalf of Glenfield subdivision, we'd like to thank you for taking your time and for considering our concerns for the proposed rezoning. A couple of things first. I know it was stated that this area was more conducive to commercial than it was residential, and I totally disagree with that. If you can see my visual aid, this here is where the areas they're considering rezoning. All the way down here, there's over 200-plus homes that are residential along Buffalo Bill. And when you talk about the speed limit, that's another thing that's wrong. If you look at the default Nebraska speed zones, by default, business is 20 and residential is 25 if it's not posted. So business is actually slower zoning than, than the, than the residential. The other thing is that down here by the lake, speed limit is 55. Where up here, where they're rezoning, it's 45 in this residential area. So it's very conducive to residential. You have a 95-acre parcel of open park ground to the north, which is used by residential people. You have a bike path adjacent to the west side. You have a bike path adjacent to the south side. You have Iron Eagle Golf Course, which some of my neighbors just drive, drive up there on their golf course on the bike path to use the golf course. You have the Community College down to the east on a bike path that people can use, use to get down to the college. And you have Ausgood School down there that kids in this neighborhood, they can just use the bike path to go down there to Ausgood School. So it's very conducive to residential area. During the council meeting, one person mentioned their concerns about government interfering with the use of parcels or property. Well, when Mr. Otlinger purchased this property, I mean, he had full disclosure that it was dedicated for agricultural or residential use only at this time. And with that knowledge, it was still purchased for, you know, by this party. Not approving the rezoning of the Glenfield Third Subdivision does not interfere with Otlinger's intended use or enjoyment of his property, which it was purchased and which it was purchased under. Rezoning the Glenfield Third Subdivision, in our opinion, does interfere with the residents if this turns to be a business park. It interferes with our property values and also our peace of mind and the property itself, so. Glenfield subdivision is a quiet neighborhood. It's located in the south side of that 95-acre city park. Buffalo Bill has bike trail alongside of it. State Farm Road has a bike trail alongside of it. Glenfield subdivision is well-established, quiet neighborhood where neighbors know each other. We can sit out on our porches, patio, see the sunset. Residents, residential yards are picturesque. Then they have flowers and green grass, and all this is a reflection of the pride that the people have in this subdivision of their homes. And any more investment in your home is no minor thing anymore. It's a major investment for anybody. People have lived here a long time. They feel a sense of serenity and a feel of community that makes this place feel like home. This is our neighborhood, our home, and we're grateful for the simplicity and the character and its beauty that it has and it holds. It's discouraging to think that the lives in the community of 27 homeowners, lot owners, who have lived at Glenfield subdivision for multiple years, who have purchased and built their dream homes, can be disrupted by a single entity that wants to change the rules for personal gain. In our opinion, Glenfield subdivision should not be changed to commercial.
Sir, you just passed five minutes, so wrap it up, please.
Okay. I did send out a lot of the ordinance items. It does say that the ordinances and the, the plans can get changed. And those can be changed if, if three things are basically not interfered with. One is, is a change, it's changed and it's applicable to change it if it's necessary and desirable for the primary purpose of the development. And this does not meet the necessary, or is it desirable? We have 100 or 99% of the people within that 300-foot zone that are opposed to this. Glenfield subdivision.
Sir, I'm gonna call time on you. It's six minutes, okay?
Well, I did send out all that information.
Very good.
So can I leave with one thought?
Sure.
Okay?
As long as it's brief.
Yes, brief. And within a year ago.
Change your comprehensive plan, provided you're looking at what's in the best interest of the community. You don't want to be changing it just because somebody comes in.
I don't know who that is.
I tell you.
I want to do this here, but your plan doesn't allow it.
That is a consultant the city hired to bring the comprehensive plan. It's Marvin's consulting. And basically, he said you don't change the plan just because somebody comes forward and says they want to do something and your plan doesn't fit it.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Kaski? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I ask everybody, anybody else on this one? Sir? Yes, you, sorry, Gary. There's a lot of you, and I'm pointing just randomly, I do apologize.
Sir, you threw me off. Gary Pearson, I'm president of North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation. Planning commissioners, just like to address kind of the, you know, the comprehensive plan part of this along with rezoning. It's all part of what a community does in the master planning, but it is a live working document, and it has to be, or a community never changes. And when you look at when this document was put together, 2010, 2011, almost 15 years ago, and now the community's going through the same process and taking a lot of time, effort, energy, a lot of people involved in putting the next plan of action into place. But you look at all the change that has occurred from that point, when the last one was done, to the point it is now, and the growth path at North Platte's on. If you can't have. to the point it is now, and the growth path at North Platte's on. If you can't have a street looks more like a highway, Buffalo Bill Avenue, to develop immediately adjacent to it, commercial developments, then the community's got a major, major issue. I mean, it is the mile an hour is no different to what you see on Highway 83. And even clear back to Jeffers into into the North Platte itself, you have 40 mile an hour speed limits. And it's primarily commercial development. Over time, there was some residential allowed in there, probably shouldn't have been, but it was, you know, and you see a lot of that changing now with those houses moving out and some of the commercial development coming in. But I would argue that in the the next planning document that comes forward, there'll be strong suggestions that along the immediate adjacent corridor to Buffalo Bill Avenue, it's a natural development for commercial properties between East State Farm Road and Walker Road. It's, as you already see on the the north end of it, where you have the convenience store going in there that Dan O'Neill is developing on the northwest corner of it, you have, or the southwest corner, you have the Palace Brewery. You can make an argument, the golf course itself that's out there is more commercial in nature than than it is residential. And I don't know what all went in. I wasn't here back in the day when they put the comprehensive plan for 2011 together. If some of that area was targeted for dense, low density type housing, then why wasn't it built? You know, when you don't see it right along Buffalo Bill between that specific quarter where residential houses are are going back and forth. And now you're seeing the natural progression with the community's growth, that this is going to be a nice commercial corridor going up to Lake Maloney. And it just is just a natural thing you're going to see in in the planning documents. So I just make the argument on behalf of the the business community that it is very conducive to what you're looking for when you try to to put business, not talking about industrial or that kind of thing, or heavy commercial, but you know, neighborhood business, commercial, along that type of a corridor.
Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, sir. Who's next? Yes, sir. See, I call everybody, sir.
Even me?
That's good. That's good.
Even you.
Most of you know me by Paul, but I'm Richard Peterson, P E D E R S E N. I'm sure Michelle knows how to spell my name. 4801 Valley Drive. We haven't lived there as long as most of these folks, but for five years, we've been out there. We enjoy the neighborhood, how quiet it is and everything like that. I'd just hate to see you turn it into business and commercial there in that strip. I think that's a natural strip for more housing. And there is a north side, or there is a west side to Buffalo, too. And I believe the property owners that own this parcel we're talking about have some property over there that might just fit this bill. So, thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Emil Bunter. I live on 4701 Heritage. I'm on the street to the east.
Okay.
Valley. I, just to echo what he said about the property on the west side, that would be more natural conducive to business development, in my opinion. You do already have pals there. They do already have a lot. I think this is just an investment opportunity. They bought it knowing it was residential. You know, they could have ran this all by you guys before they bought it. You know, we could have bent through this before they bought it. I don't, you know, also, I'm sure you guys live in neighborhoods and you don't have to think too long about having a boat repair shop in your backyard and what that would do to your living and your peace and quiet or whatever it is that you have. It's pretty simple. And, you know, you guys wouldn't, you know, change a residential lot on West Leota into a boat shop. You know you would. And this isn't any different whether Buffalo Bill's there or not. And I agree with what Ken said about the speeds. I think it would, it would turn this, you know, I think the speeds would end up being lowered because of the traffic. And we don't have a problem with traffic right now or noise or anything that businesses would attract. It's, you know, I don't think I have to explain it too much. Thanks, guys.
Any questions for Mr. Bund- Bundler? Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sarah Pearson. I live at 4701 Valley Drive. Well, as my husband says, I suffer from chronic migraines and have been through this noise with the migraines already. All I'm asking is, would any of y'all like this in your backyard? And I believe do unto your neighbors as you want done upon yourself. And that's all I have to say. Just a little respect goes a long way. Lot of property for sale besides where we live. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Pearson? Thank you, ma'am. No, you're fine. Thank you. Who's next?
Mark Idagram, the existing property owner. Previously, before we bought the property, the previous owners tried for many years to get housing built out there. And obviously, that never came to fruition, probably for certain reasons why we haven't seen it. So with pals out there, obviously, we've already zoned the convenience store commercial, pals commercial out there, the golf course. It's a logical growth corridor, especially between the lake. And I addressed a few things with the landlords. And if you could take a copy. I just want to make sure you see a full footprint of the property. The original, when I first came here, we went to ask for the 10 acres. And listening to the neighbors, their concern was that'd be a business park. So we, we lowered this down to two and a half acres that we're asking for now to to address that for the adjacent property owners. If you take a look at the property, the building is to the north side, to the left side of your paper. The reason this lot was picked to rezone it there, the entrance is on the north side of the property there. And you'll see the zoning line in red there. That's all the numbers that David, David read. That's the property on it on the red, which leaves us about a 50 foot buffer to the east there on our property that'll stay ag. We'll also add a tree line there for a little buffer. Now, if you look at the the first adjoining property to the east there, it is a large property that has a very mature tree grove. The closest house behind that is 430 feet, four football fields, over four. So when you hear backyard, I don't know if four football fields is a backyard when you're looking at development. The next closest home is 570 feet, almost six football fields, 620 to the to the south. That's a great deal of distance when you're talking a buffer between commercial and and residential housing. And that's, that's exactly why we picked the north side of the property because it's the farthest away from any housing. Want to address the the noise. Buffalo Bill, I don't, I don't know if you've sat outside of pals, any of you, but that street is extremely noisy. Our boat shop is designed to be one of the few anywhere that has excellent air conditioning, that company in town is designing for us with insulated doors. Our job is to make sure we get the work done inside because obviously on days like today, it's almost impossible to to do any work outside. And the noise will be much less than anything that you would hear out on the road from Buffalo Bill from other trucks and campers going by. Keep in mind, we do close by 6:00 in the evening, Monday through Friday. The reason, the last reason that we picked this this area was many of the boats have to get run. Most of the testing actually be done on the lake. So it's a straight shot up to the east boat ramp, right up Buffalo Bill, when a boat's been worked on. Most of the running will be done up on the lake to make sure these boats are running on that. As you heard, it's not conducive to run a boat inside a boat shop very long. But the age facts that's designed for that, just like a car dealership that works on cars, our exhaust system are designed to hook up for that. And a lot of the work to be done inside while these motors are running to keep the air clean. I take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Ottinger?
I have one. You you mentioned the 430 feet to the, and building to the east, right? The first house to the east.
Yep.
And, and you stated that was four football fields.
Well.
Football fields are in yards.
Yeah, you're right. I got, I got a little excited when I saw you.
That's 35 yards.
Okay, so that's, yeah. That's all I had. I just want to point out that that's kind of misleading. I thought, wow, that's a long way, but it's really.
Glad, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Ottinger?
I got one. So you already own the lot just to the north of pals. It's already zoned commercial. Why don't you put your building there?
I don't own that lot. Pals owns that lot. That is a different ownership group. This this 10 acre lot here is owned by my wife and my son and me.
And pals is not you?
I'm, I'm a sixth of pals. So some of those owners don't even live in the state. So I can't make the decisions on that property by myself.
Would there be much difference if the building was across the road as far as noise to the adjacent people? If that's the concern?
I, I, it'd only be 100 feet or 200 feet further. You're asking me if 100 feet would make a difference? I think anything makes a difference when it comes to noise. If you lived 100 feet farther away from Buffalo Bill, you obviously wouldn't hear the road as much either, right?
Other questions from Mr. Ottinger? You're not asking them. We are. Thank you, sir.
What time do you think you'd open in the morning? I guess you talked about closing time.
Eight to five.
Well, you've mentioned possibly close by six.
Well, sometimes a boat takes so long, or you might get one door shut at 5:30. But, you know, if a customer's waiting, so, but your normal, you wouldn't take a boat at anytime before five.
Question here. So what would the rest of the property be used for at some point? You know, you've you've scaled down the portion of zoning, but ownership still extends all the way over. So what is your plan for the rest of that?
Well, the rest of that is still be zoned ag and R2.
But it's, it's all A1. The remaining of the property would be all A1. I don't want to put.
Other than the house.
Other than that bed and breakfast that's on the corner. Yeah. So it's all, it would all remain ag. So he can continue to do, you know, I don't want to put words in his mouth. I don't know what his future plans are.
Right.
But he can continue to use it as is. So right now, there's corn out there, I believe. He can continue to use the rest of that as.
I just wondered if there was any plan for the business to expand or, you know, to do anything different with that lot?
No, it'd be existing cows, crops.
Any other questions for Mr. Ottinger from up here? Sorry for the clarification. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
He did ask that you return these.
You want to hold on to him through the discussion or no? Anybody else want to just want to testify on this first? You've already taken six and a half minutes.
It should be 30 seconds because it's my property that he's talking to like next door.
Come up.
He mentioned the the area that was, had a few trees on there next door. That was a piece of property, two and a half acres. That's right to the back of where he's building. And that was a piece of property my wife and I bought 30 years ago for our retirement. And we were planning to build out there. So that will get developed. And as of last week, Tuesday was my last day of work. So.
Congratulations, by the way.
Now we're trying to figure it out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I address the gentleman that's?
You may not. You can ask him outside, but you have to talk to us. This is your testifying to us in this thing. It's not a Q and A.
So I'm just gonna say again, so go around the room real good. Does anybody want this in their backyard that's in this room today?
Okay, you've already asked that question. Okay. Thanks. Thanks. Anybody else? Going once. Going twice.
I'm willing to close the public hearing.
Motion by Van Velsen, seconded by Davies to close a public hearing. Any discussion on that matter? Not? Michelle, please. Okay, we appreciate all your testimony. We're going to talk about this up here now. Okay. All right. So you've got two items on your agenda. Item number eight would be flipping the future land use map with all those minutes, seconds, and feet that we all love to read here in the reading. And then if that passes, we'd have to deal with number nine, which is the actual rezoning. So you've got two things here. You can't do the second without the first. Is that clear? Okay. Questions, comments?
Just for clarification, the map that Mr. Ottinger provided that shows the zoning line, that is the same line that the amendment would be requested for. So you will just be amending that same square.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but this body actually approved flipping the entire thing at the last meeting in May, correct?
Correct. They approved amending the entire parcel to commercial and they also approved rezoning the entire parcel to commercial.
And this is probably considered splitting hairs, but recommended to the city council approval. So that, just to keep in mind, the planning commission's role is that you're, you're providing a recommendation to city council as to what to do here. So because your expertise is in the planning and zoning of these different parcels, and so that's why city council takes your advice and generally takes your advice.
Even if we all say no, it still goes to the city council and they get the last say anyways.
Well, I don't want to speculate as to what may or may not happen here, but the planning commission is meant to provide recommendations to city council.
I was just going to point out, I was looking at the meets and bounds, which I sometimes do in my work. And I was a little confused when I only had this drawing because it showed a square. But this, and I was going to say, oh, I know what that is. It missed the the cutout. And that's what the cutout is. You have.
Correct.
Yeah. The, the turnout is public right of way. So there's a jog there. It's not a square.
Yeah.
Teeny tiny corner.
Got the jog for the road. Yes.
Yes.
Which is why it took so bloody long to read.
One of the reasons.
I've got one comment about our previous recommendation and this time around. One thing I do remember from the last planning commission meeting is that we didn't have any public comment, if I remember correctly. And I was surprised by that, quite frankly. And I think I even asked, did letters go out? You know, were they notified? And so part of when I make a decision or my vote is based on public comment. And since we didn't have any, I figured there must not be much objection. So I think, given new testimony, we have the right to change our mind. And I just want to keep an open mind with that, given what we've heard. So, you know, I just feel like we have to consider that this time around. So, you know, I, I just feel like we have to consider that this time around.
And the letters are 300 feet?
Yep, 300 feet from the area that's being requested to be rezoned. So last time it would have went out to quite a few more than what it went out to this time. Plus they are, it's published in the Telegraph and it is also posted on the property every time we do a rezoning or an amendment or a conditional use. It's always done the same.
Time would have went to here, just aside.
It would have went just to the valley road or?
Basically.
Okay. And this time it went all the way over to heritage? Is that what you're saying? No?
It actually shrunk this time. Yeah. It shrunk this time.
Okay. Got it. Yes, thank you.
Actually, there were only seven property owners within that 300 foot radius. So, no, the second time. Yes.
How many the first time do you remember?
A lot.
Thirty some.
All of these. There'd be most all those along Valley Drive, a lot.
The first time everybody, essentially everybody in that area would have been notified. Because it went all the way down to State Farm, so even the people across the street, you know, from State Farm Road would have been notified. This immensely shrunk the area. And so it only notified basically people just directly abutting that. Personally, you know, notified by mail, but everybody in the area is notified because of the posting and the Telegraph publication.
Right. I have another question. So although the rest of the property would not change its zoning, could part of that property be used for storage, you know, put a boat out there or equipment? Since it's their property that they own, could they, okay?
Not legally.
Okay.
No. In an ag district, it's basically set aside for farming operations. They could build an agricultural building, but to go out there and line boats up in that 54 foot buffered area? No, that would not be in allowed use in an agricultural district.
What was the future land use for this proposed in the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan had, and remember, the comprehensive plan was originally done back in 2011.
Right.
So that one indicated a lot of this area for residential.
Was there any commercial in the area out there at the time though?
Um, just at the intersections mostly, if I remember correctly.
The intersection like it's at?
The Walker and State Farm.
That wasn't commercial. That, that was residential, wasn't it?
It was residential.
Pretty much everything was residential.
Yeah, at the time. But when you're, when you're looking at planning for an area, again, you've got to consider a lot of things. So if you look at an area like this, South Buffalo is basically a three lane highway. You know, I guess I wouldn't call it a highway, but three lane. So when you're doing planning, you always try to go most intensive up against a high traffic area and go out. So even if you looked at something like this, so say, for example, you wanted to leave this as residential. Let's say, for example, you wanted to do that. Single family residential is probably not going to, but Buffalo. You're going to have multifamily residential. So you're going to look at apartment complexes, those types of things, because you always buffer your single family residential. That's how planning works. So your higher intensive districts should be, you know, your higher intensive traffic areas should be industrial. Then you should go commercial. Then you should go multifamily residential, then to residential. That's how perfect planning would work. Now you look at our map. It's not a perfect world, right? But that's kind of what you've got to think of when you think of something like this. How conducive is it to large lot, single family development? Is that what you envision this to be in 30 years? And that's what we're working through right now with the new comp plan and how things change and where you're going. What is this area going to be like in 30 years?
Would it be safe to assume that in the new comp plan, that a good hunk of this corridor from State Farm to Walker is going to be commercial?
I can almost guarantee you that is the way it will turn out.
And that probably all changed when the overpass got put over the interstate and the three lane got put in all the way to State Farm.
And my question was, when was that? Do you recall?
Um, Brent may know. Could we, could we grab Brent?
Brent, since you're here and standing there, can we ask you? When, when was the overpass put in?
Well, you get, the timeframe is probably late 2000. The process was eight, nine, 10, 11. And that timeframe is when it was planned to when it was constructed, finished, usable. So it was right around the same time. So it wasn't in and had much time to see the impact. So it was just all forecast.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry to pull you out of the hallway.
Call me again.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Strzelski just said it opened in 2011 because that's when he moved home or who is now home.
I have another question. We've been talking about a convenience store somewhere. I'm sorry, I missed that. Where is that?
It's up on the corner of Walker and Buffalo. It is just now being installed or constructed. I just watched the, I just watched the, um, gas tanks go underground the other day, so.
Pretty cool. Yep, it's a quick stop.
It's right on the corner of Walker, so you're just talking the next road up. Also, north of this property, they talked about a park, um, which a lot of people refer to as South Park. That property was, the land use was amended, what, maybe two years ago? Um, and it went to a PR1 for a portion of it. And the portion right along Buffalo was rezoned and the amendment was done to commercial. So you have a strip of commercial north of this property. Doesn't quite go clear south to abutting this property, but pretty close. That is zone commercial right along Buffalo. And then a PR1, you guys have all been involved in planned residential districts. Those can also include commercial construction in those planned residential districts.
That's everything basically north of the creek, correct?
That's everything basically north of the creek, yes.
So there will be commercial all over that trail?
Right along that trail, yes. And I know there's a lot of concerns and I'll, I'll let you go in here in a second. I know there's a lot of concerns about traffic crossing that trail. Buffalo and please correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, Buffalo has controlled access. So that's why you'll see on that, um, Walker where that convenience store is going in, they came off of, off of Walker Road, not off of Buffalo. Um, also with this project, you can see that we've split that access. That's so that if something were to happen in 10 years on the south side, they would have shared access across that, um, bike path or onto the road. So you wouldn't, we try to control access across that because we are very cognizant of the bike trail. Plus with a higher traffic area, you don't want as many accesses onto that from the property. So, sorry.
I don't know that I need to add anymore. I just appreciate us protecting that trail there. And I'm really considering how many entrances run across that. I mean, yeah, we'd hate to see driveways added or anything really, um, because it's a great trail to let kids ride along. And I, I guess I keep thinking too, um, so many communities are talking about walkability, walkability, walkability. And how are we building neighborhoods out so that we can go and walk to a business and possibly have our haircut? Or, you know, whatever that looks like, like, um, I know, you know, there's maybe people who don't want this in their backyard. But I'm also like, I think North Platte in some ways has missed out on some opportunities to have business mixed in that is well done and that, um, actually improves, um, the houses. You know, their property increases in value, I think. As somebody who looks at trails as being a positive and looks at, you know, what could I be walking to? And improve my way of life just because I'm not having to hop in a car to do something, so.
I have a concern with the future use of the rest of the site. I don't see it going any other way. I don't see any residential, other than maybe a large multifamily unit. I think it prohibits the rest of the site. If you do that to that corner. That's what I'm thinking.
You're thinking if you leave it ag or leave it residential?
I don't think it's going to be anything else other than commercial in the future or ag with nothing in it. And changing just this corner, it's going to prevent residential, which is what it is.
So you're saying we should look at the entirety of the piece of property now?
That's why I kind of agreed with the entire property because once you do this piece, it really hampers what this piece changes to. If not, commercial to follow suit.
I can't disagree with you, Jeff. I mean.
Along corridor like this, it's set up for commercial, not residential. I mean, that's the whole idea is you want your commercial zones along roads like this.
I could see maybe residential if you put a street down the middle and back up to Buffalo with the buffer zone. But everybody was right. You don't want to live along Buffalo. It is like, a lab street. It's like living on a highway. So that's going to hamper any residential development of it.
That's why we have a gas station less than a blockway or filling the convenience store going in on the corner.
That's, that's quite a ways actually.
It is. It's a mile.
Or half anyway.
It's a half.
Well, the lot north of Pals is already zoned commercial.
Right.
If the Pals owners get together and decide they want to build something else, it's commercial already. So you're going to have another commercial building right there.
On the west side.
Yeah, across the street already, but it's in the same corridor. That's what I'm saying. It's going to be a corridor of commercial eventually.
I would agree with that.
That's why I kind of agreed with the 10 acres because I agreed with that. With this, I think it's going to hamper any future use here. By breaking it down, but because we're going to come up against this on any development of the rest of it. If it's not straight residential.
Maybe they'll put a beauty shop that won't be so noisy.
Well, I was, you know, what have been?
Yeah, we still can't prove the noise level. That's always a difficult thing with a high.
And I think that's the only thing they're complaining about is the noise level. So, I mean, you can put a bar in there, you can put this in there. I mean, it's just the noise level, but I live a block from a train track. You know, my house shakes every time a train goes by.
Great North Platte native then.
But I knew that when we moved there too, that, that's, that's the deal. These people bought that as a quiet neighborhood and now we're trying to change it.
That's the entire thing right there.
If everybody keeps saying not in my backyard, we ain't never going to have anything.
Correct.
Well, I bought my house with a lot behind me and I got an apartment building behind my house, so.
Yeah, I mean, I understand where they're coming from, but if you don't let something come in, we're never going to let anything come in. We ain't going to ever have anything.
I think like a retail strip mall or something like that, that has an attorney's office and a investment services office and a bank or salon or whatever is different than the, the business being proposed. To, to your point about the noise, I think that's the issue. Not necessarily that it's going to be commercial because there's commercial that is very, you know, low noise, low lights, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, um, it, it's the proposed business. So that's where I'm, I keep going back and forth because I, I, yeah, it's going to be commercial. But nobody's going to build a house there. Maybe someone would build a multifamily unit there. Probably not because I don't even think it's probably a good area for that. And I, I'm not even sure if, we struggle bringing developers in anyway and not even sure that land is conducive to that. But at the same time, should it be a marina? I don't know.
One of the, one of the things to think about when you're planning, um, most people, when they come and propose a rezoning, we ask them what they are going to do with the property. They are not required to have an absolute plan when they request to rezone the property. They're requesting to rezone it commercial. He is giving us the information of what he wants to put there. He could have came to us and requested it as commercial and said, I don't know, I'm thinking about selling it. I want it commercial. So, um, I, I get the idea. We're sitting here talking about this marina. But what we need to be talking about is the zone, what it should be for this area. Is the rezoning, whatever project is going to go there that fits in a commercial district, should we allow that to happen? So it could be a salon. It could be a Burger King. It could be a quick stop. It could be whatever else is allowed in that B2. The owner is being nice enough to tell us what he's wanting to put in there. He's not required to do that. Somebody can come in and say, I want to rezone it to B2. So when you're looking at that from a planning perspective and you look at all, you can take your book and look at all the things that would be allowed in a commercial district. Because he may give this to us today, we rezone it. That may fall to pieces. Now you have a commercial zone property. Do you want to allow that commercial zone property there? Could be an ice cream parlor.
Could be a car dealership.
Could be a car dealership. Could be a lot of, of anything because, you know, this could fall apart. So you want to think about, is this area a good place for commercial? Not necessarily what that commercial is. Is it a good place for a commercial?
And I believe that there is an expert on that kind of stuff told us that this is planned to be, this is the best use is commercial on this, on this street. Get, thinking Gary is one of those kind of guys. What's the idea of the buffer with the, the fact that this zoning line doesn't go clear to the property line leaving that? I mean, the future development of that area?
It was basically to try and provide a larger buffer between the homeowners and the property.
Which to me is a good use of that area. And I reach out to the fact that I think this will be commercial eventually someday anyway. In my opinion. For future growth. That's what happened on the west side of North Platte is we really have so much resident, or so much residential, there is no commercial there. I mean, and it's really limited the growth of North Platte.
Okay. You have two items that we need to tackle here. Well, one item is if we don't, if the group does not pass the first item, it can't take up the second item, correct, Judy?
That is correct.
Bill just shrugged his shoulders and he's not sure.
I think they could take it out. Like I said, if it's recommending. Recommend yes or you could recommend no.
Oh, okay. We'll go with what the attorney says.
Okay, so we will take up two items regardless of what.
But I'd say take up eight first.
Yeah, sure.
The impact would happen.
Okay. Any more to?
So then, do we look at it as a whole or do we feel better about just chunking it out? You know, with the comprehensive plan, having this one area being commercial and the rest of it?
That may be a question for Bill. So since they did approve this or made a recommendation to do the full entire thing, can they now go back and say, okay, we don't like this proposal. We want to stick with our original recommendation? Can they do that?
I, I would say yes. I mean, it, um, so this is a new application that has been submitted. And the previous application was tabled by the city council, so it could be brought back off of the table.
With no action? Still active, really?
It, it is. And so, you know, I, I would say the planning commission, uh, uh, the materials have, um, a recommended motion or a proposed motion that you could make, uh, but you could change that motion. Any, any commission member could make a motion, uh, that, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but you could recommend that the entire parcel or the, we're on the, um, we're on item eight, which is for an amendment to the comp plan. And so you could make a, a motion today, uh, that reinforces the recommendation that was passed in the last. You could make a recommendation to deny it. You could make a recommendation for or against item eight. So I don't know that I'm, I, I, I'm only here to provide advice. I'm not here to tell you what to do. So, you know, that would be up to anyone who would want to make a motion. And, and, and that's, that's why you have the pleasure of serving on this illustrious conference.
I wasn't at the city council or even not read on anything. What was there? They're, they're the ones that recommended us smallering it to the smaller size.
No, honestly, they were the ones that just tabled the item. After that, um, city council meeting, um, I had conversations with the applicant. I believe, um, the city attorney did, we, we just talked about, he, he was wanting to do his project. And after that, there were several things brought up, um, noise, um, And after that, there were several things brought up, um, noise, um, I don't know, providing a buffer, not being in city limits, um, several things were brought up. And so the applicant worked with staff to try and come up with a plan that would maybe be a little bit more, um, palatable to the neighbors. So he was trying to be a good neighbor and come up with something like that. So that's why it came back here. It wasn't because, um, city council came up with this idea. It was because, um, we did that after tabling of the original application.
So your recommendation is that they're very willing to work with this area to make it most conducive to the area. The planning commission and yourself probably see more of this as future business development areas.
I will, I will stick with my original, um, recommendation from the last meeting. The entire area, from my perspective, should be amended to commercial and should be rezoned commercial.
I would agree with that.
But if the applicant is choosing to try and make this a little bit more palatable, I would not disagree with his proposal.
I mean, I don't want to deter what the applicant's trying to do here with the two-point-five-nine acres. But it almost seems a little silly that we're not just doing the whole area when it's going to come back in a year or two. You know it will.
He's still going to build it in the same spot if we do the whole thing, right?
Correct. He's, he's trying to be a good neighbor. Yes.
Like State Farm.
Let me, let me ask. Let me ask the stupid question, which is, and maybe not stupid, but maybe just a stupid question. We, we recommend, or this group recommends that this section gets done. The comp plan says, no, the whole thing gets done and the end result's the same anyway, correct?
Correct.
I'm just asking that. Yeah. It's probably getting, it's probably going to wind up commercial sooner or later.
So, so Bill, we could send this back to city council, saying that we would like to see the entire parcel rezoned, correct?
Um, yes. Uh, and so I'm just trying to think, um, I guess my recommendation on that, if, if that would be the direction you would want to go, um, it would, because we've had a public hearing on this specific parcel, um, if you want to have a proposed motion, I think it would be helpful, because of our proceedings here today, to have a motion that includes a recommendation on this item number eight. But you could add into your motion that you want to reiterate your support for the entire area. So that, that would be my position.
So essentially, make a motion to approve this and also recommend to council that the entire parcel be rezoned.
Yes. I, I, I would be comfortable with that, yes.
You would probably want to do that with both the amendment and the.
Are you looking at me like I'm going to say?
Oh, you're writing it down.
I just get the information.
All right.
We got to vote on eight then nine?
No, one at a time.
Yep.
So this will be, we need to take up item number eight. Somebody want to take a stab at this?
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number AM two-four-dash-zero-zero-four, an amendment to the North Platte, Nebraska Comprehensive Plan, two thousand and eleven. Future land use map amending certain lands from residential, low-density, single-family to commercial located on South Buffalo Bill Avenue, north of West State Farm Road. Would also like to recommend that the entire parcel would also be rezoned as part of this.
Amended.
Amended.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Did he say rezoned on that last one?
I corrected him to amended.
Amended, amended.
The entire parcel be amended.
It's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Whirl. Any more discussion? Michelle, I have to abstain on this one, as I did last month. If not, please vote. Oops, that's all right. And the motion passes.
This will go to the city council meeting on July sixteenth.
Okay, so then we have a motion, we have a item number nine, which would be the actual recommendation on the rezoning from A1 transitional to a B2 commercial highway. So this is a second action.
And Mr. Chairman, I would move to make a recommendation to approve file number Z twenty-four-dash-double-oh-nine to rezone certain lands from an A1 transitional agricultural district to a B2 highway commercial district located on South Buffalo Bill Avenue, north of West State Farm Road. And, uh, recommend that the, uh, city council include the entire parcel in that rezone.
Second.
Motion by Van Velson, seconded by Jett. Any further discussion on this motion? Again, I'll be abstaining, Michelle. Not, please vote.
All we're doing is redoing what we did before.
And the, uh, motion passes.
And this again will go to city council on July sixteenth.
Can you pass these all back to the center, please?
This one will go to sixteen.
Good to know.
Item number ten, discuss and consider annexation of parcel ID number zero-zero-five-four-six-two-four-point-eight-zero, described as Block Two Glenfield's Third Subdivision, Lincoln County, Nebraska, into the corporate limits of City North Platte, Nebraska, consisting, uh, consisting of nine-point-nine-six acres. Judy?
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments. And unfortunately, I apologize, I did not attach the letter requesting the annexation. I do have it back in my folder. Um, I don't know how I missed that, but the applicant is here. He can tell you what he wrote in the letter. Um, planning staff does recommend, um, the proposed annexation. The property is adjacent to and abutting the current corporate limits of the city of North Platte. There is access to city water and sewer. Do you have any questions? The applicant is in the audience. This is what we call a friendly annexation, as it was requested by the property owner.
I was just going to ask that question. Any discussion on this matter?
This is the entire parcel we just.
Yep, this is the whole kit and caboodle. I do love it when they're friendly.
Me, too.
I move to make a recommendation to annex parcel ID zero-zero-five-four-six-two-four-point-eight-zero, described as Block Two Glenfield's Third Subdivision, Lincoln County, Nebraska, into the corporate city limb, city of corporate limits of the city of North Platte, Nebraska, consisting of approximately nine-point-nine-six acres.
Second.
Said Emily, sorry, Angie, sorry. Motion by Bain, seconded by Forbes to recommend approval of the annexation.
No, it was a motion by Bain, Davies.
Sorry, I have, I have a headache and I'm getting tired. Uh, motion by Davies, seconded by Forbes, my apologies. Any discussion on this one? Not, please vote. And that motion is approved. Item number eleven is being pulled from the agenda. There's some work to do on this thing. And, um, we had some discussions prior to the meeting, and until it's ready, we're going to go ahead and remove that from tonight's agenda. File number, excuse me, item number thirteen, twelve, thirteen? Technically twelve, but on the agenda thirteen.
That's one of them.
We're all a little fuzzy tonight. Something happened the last two weeks in town. File number SU twenty-four-dash-zero-one-one, application by the North Platte Area Chamber Development Devco for Mulligan Meadows Second Subdivision, located at fifteen-eleven North Adams, on property described as Lot Nine Mulligan Meadows for Subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Judy?
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments. And attached to that is a preliminary and final, um, subdivision. And this subdivision will create six lots and a portion of West Sixteenth Street in an R-two dwelling district. Public utilities will be extended to service the lots with extension of West Sixteenth Street at developer's expense. Planning staff has no objections to the subdivision. This is the second phase of a proposed multi-lot housing development. The applicant is in the audience, if you should have any questions. And I do apologize, this one, I almost forgot to put on the agenda. That's why you ended up last.
Sorry, sir.
He was going to stay anyway.
And that's why we got thirteen, because I was confused at that point.
Any, uh, questions, comments?
Are you reading it?
What, huh?
What, what?
Go. Yep.
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number SU two-four-dash-zero-one-one, preliminary and final approval of Mulligan Meadows Second Subdivision.
Second.
Well, no one else was reading it.
He waited for me to nod at him. Motion by Jet, seconded by Davies, got it right that time, for, uh, recommending approval. Any discussion on this matter? Not, Michelle, please. And that item is approved. Any old business? Any new business? Meeting adjourned.